Good evening, and I would like to reopen the regular meeting of the Bronxville Board of Trustees for November thirteenth, 2023, and ask all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Start with a quick mayor's report. At long last, some of you walkers who are watching, the Duck Pond Bridge is down there. It's a prefab bridge, and they told me it's going to be operational by week's end. So for all the folks who like to do that one-mile loop, it's going to be back hopefully by Friday. We have a food drive going on, thanks to the Junior League of Bronxville, and they're looking for all the sides that go along with the turkey dinner. And items can be brought up until Wednesday, the fifteenth, and they can be brought to the front of Village Hall. A couple congratulations. First, to our county legislator, James Nolan. He will continue in a second term, and we hope to continue the great working relationship we had with Mr. Nolan. Also, our first female detective, Cheryl Jeros, is on the job, and again, congratulations to her for being the first in the Bronxville Police Department. On all the good news, the girls' tennis team in Bronxville became the state champions, and our police department escorted them with sirens and much fanfare back home from Long Island when they got to the village border. And the girls', boys' and girls' track team, many of them have qualified for the upcoming state championship. And finally, this past week, obviously, the eleventh was Veterans Day, and a big thank you to all our veterans. There is a wonderful anonymous quote that says, "We don't know them all, but we owe them all." So a thank you to every veteran out there. And since our next meeting will be after Thanksgiving, just a happy, healthy, family Thanksgiving to everybody listening. Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor.
And then trustees, after Jim, maybe if anybody has different areas that they want to update us on.
Okay, just a couple items first. We always talk about the leaf blowers, but just a reminder that the use of the gas-powered leaf blowers are permitted through December fifteenth, through, so during this leaf collection period. They'll no longer be permitted from December fifteenth through March fifteenth in the spring.
The date is that you can go, that's a Friday, so you can use them that Friday, but not the sixteenth.
Exactly. Yep, we wanted to stop that before the holidays. And on that note, DPW's principal focus, Department of Public Works, right now is, of course, doing the leaf collection. Last week was a short week due to the two holidays for the Street and Highway Division, with the exception of, we did have sanitation in to do the refuse collection on Election Day, but otherwise, it was a short week, so they're a little bit behind on leaves. However, they will be out in your neighborhood, and the crews are going to be working on this Saturday as well. So, and just a reminder, as we put in the newsletter, please try to refrain from putting your leaves out in the street, and especially near catch basins. So just wanted to mention that. While we're talking about stormwater, what we were just discussing in our work session is that I am working with our consulting engineer with PCI to schedule another Zoom session for the neighborhood of Hamilton and Sussex and Sherman, and I will also reach out and include the residents of Elm Rock, Lee, as well as Masterton on that next Zoom session. And we will schedule that for early next week, hopefully on Monday afternoon, and then I'll let everyone know so we can, since I do get emails and calls on that regularly, and everyone in those affected neighborhoods are anxious to see what the design of the stormwater improvements are going to be. But as many of the residents know, in that area, part of the process has been to complete those soil borings, which were done, and there were tests, borings done at several locations along Holmesdale and Hamilton, again, to see the subsurface conditions, to confirm any rock and the type of soil. So the more information that we have in advance for the contractor, obviously, it'll be better. Right now, I'm also working on obtaining the water maps, hard copies, digital copies of the actual maps, even though we've done markouts for those utilities. We actually want the maps for where the water lines are located. That, too, will help us, because, again, what we're talking about is adding stormwater conveyance lines, large pipes in the ground, along sections of Sherman, Sussex, Hamilton, across Pond Field, down Holmesdale, and also doing the same on Elm Rock, down to Masterton, with the purposes, in the case of Elm Rock, diverting that water that's coming down from Iona. Everything on the west side comes down twenty-two, and Elm Rock's a wide road, and you can see it during a heavy rain event, it's rushing down Elm Rock. And the current design of our existing system is, when it gets to Elm Rock in the corner of Oriole, it all makes a sharp turn all the way down Lee, where it then discharges to Hamilton and Sussex into that low point. So the approach that the engineers are taking in their design is increasing the size of the conveyance, adding a new conveyance pipe to supplement what we have in the Hamilton-Sussex area to capture that stormwater that's also coming down twenty-two into those neighborhoods, but at the same time, also reduce what's coming into those neighborhoods from what's coming down Elm Rock and Lee. So for anyone listening, if you're in those neighborhoods, we will send out a, we actually have a large group already of over thirty-four residents in one of the, in one particular area, but we will set a Zoom date, and we'll give you the details on that, so you can listen in and hear what the plans are. So more to follow on that.
Yeah, Mr. Palmer, just to clarify on that, the current plans and thoughts for drainage down Elm Rock and Masterton are down Elm Rock and then to the south on Masterton. So residents who are north of Elm Rock on Masterton, at present, nothing is going to be happening in front of those folks' houses, just so we don't make more people wondering what's going on than is necessary. Be down Elm Rock and then
Down to the left of Masterton.
South on Masterton.
Being diverted to Pond Field, correct. Yes, yeah. And again, and the discussions with the engineers, it's, the focus has been on, right, preliminary conceptual designs. Now we're getting to the formal design stage, now that he's reviewing the boring information and has the maps from the other utilities, and, right, and determining on, I think we're all in agreement, that the first step is to work on getting the infrastructure in where it's undersized on Hamilton and Sherman and Sussex. So more to be followed on that, and hopefully, within the next week, we'll have a timetable that starts to take shape. But I also know that our engineers have walked with the contractors that did bid and were awarded our emergency contract back in 2022. The only other item that I also wanted to mention is, just to update the board, is many of you might have seen, the, following the board's approval, the construction of the sidewalk and the RFB installation is underway on twenty-two, and the sidewalk is actually entirely in, along with the RFB pole on the east side, and the contractor was preparing the cutout for the footing on the, for the RFB on the west side today. And as just as a reminder to the board, I think there might have been some confusion as to the hedges that were removed at Two Duesenberry. And as was part of the project last year, before we halted it, halted the project, I had had numerous conversations with the homeowner of Duesenberry, continued to have numerous conversations, and it was always the village's intention to replace those hedges that needed to be removed, that while the root of the hedge, if you will, was on private property, the hedges were leaning out, well out into the right of way, and unfortunately, due to their condition, frankly, were roped and being tied up over the years. But, so as part of this project, I had met with the homeowner last year, before we had paused the project, that they were going to be removed, and that the village had an estimate and was prepared to replace those. So, again, we've been working with the homeowner, and it was the intention then, our intention now, to reimburse the homeowner for the replacement of those, which frankly, will also significantly help the sightline at that location as you head out of Duesenberry, because for the last several years, unfortunately, certain types of apperviding don't grow out as opposed to up, and this particular apperviding was also growing out. So it should help with the sightline as well. So just wanted to clarify that, that is underway, and the resident did pick out a landscaping company and will be providing me with those estimates, and he will be reimbursed when he provides an invoice, so just wanted to clarify that piece. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustees, does anyone want to speak on anything, update us on anything? No?
Just very briefly, this Veterans Day, at the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, members of the nature preserve and the adjoining streets, primarily Ridgcroft, Course View, Duesenberry, and others, got together for our fall nature preserve cleanup day, and I think it was our best cleanup day ever. I think we had over twenty adults, and perhaps even more importantly, over twenty kids show up, and did a lot of removing of vines, overgrown bushes, planting of bulbs in the nature preserve, and it was a really very nice event. So I want to thank everyone in that part of the village for their community spirit and showing up in force, so that was a very nice day. And I know I'm going to end up leaving some folks out, because I only thought of doing this this morning, but in the context of Veterans Day, I know this because with our promotions of our police officers, we get to be reminded of some of their background, and if I've left an officer out, it's on me, but I know that Police Officer Ahmed Donso Fareed and our newly promoted Lieutenant, Lieutenant William Carroll, are both military veterans, so I think it's appropriate. I know all trustees would join me in thanking them for their service, and again, I didn't attempt to do this for
And Peter.
And Peter, our videographer, is still on air, and I don't know who from DPW or who else in Village Hall, but I just happen to know of our two police officers, and my apologies to anyone else I've missed. I think we're very lucky to have all of our staff, and again, thank those members of our village family in particular for their service.
Thank you, Bill, for remembering that. Thank you.
Jim, in your comments, could you provide any update as to what's happening with Metro North and the work there, if there is any?
Sure, sure. They are working on, they are working on the underpass largely during the hours of nine AM to two PM weekdays, so it's, and honestly, it's, this project is going to take, it's going to take many months, it's going to, it's going to take several months, but it's long overdue, and, but as you know, they're cleaning the steel, removing the rust, painting the steel, that right now, they've been priming it to hopefully preserve its life, replacing sections of the steel where necessary. They're also cleaning the concrete, where there's been some of the spalling, and they'll be painting the concrete, so multiple steps, but unfortunately, what I found out is this crew that's doing the work that's coming at nine is coming from almost as far as Dover, and by the time they, right, by the time they get down here, and then they have to be back up there by two, by two-thirty, because it's another hour up, and so it's going to be for an extended period of time. But already with the work that I've seen, though, is positive. It's, it looks cleaner, but every
It's moving along.
Many more months.
Yeah, many more months, but what I should emphasize is, I got to say, with doing a little brainstorming with Metro North and the chief of police out there, we were able to simply work with alternating, alternating traffic by cutting the concrete islands out, as you could see, and it seems to have kept traffic moving. We just requested that they start after nine, but when I found out that, yes, these guys, by the time they get down there, and they work for a little bit, they got to start to head back up, and, but it's in progress.
Thank you. All righty, I think we have one public hearing on a proposed Local Law Six dash twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Essentially, Jim, isn't this, I mean, just something we have to do now that we're helping to fix the sewers on Wood End Lane, correct?
Exactly. Right, remember previously, right, previously, we put the line in, a homeowner's now getting connected to it, we had a new section in our code, but this language will now exempt homeowners from having to install the five-hundred-gallon concrete holding tank if they have a generator functioning on the site. So it's just another one of those options that, if they have a functioning generator, then they don't need a backup holding tank in the event there's a failure with the injection pump. So it's, again, we added this new section for sewers, and it's just evolving a little bit.
Okay, perfect. Trustees, anyone want to speak about the Wood End Lane? I think we've gone through that, and the neighbors know, so this is just to codify things. Anyone in the audience want to speak to the public hearing?
Do we have a person or a second to open up that hearing?
Yeah.
You got all that?
Yeah. All right. No, it's not terribly exciting, but it's a must-do. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And trustees, do you want, is there a spot here, Jim, for us to vote on this, if we want to?
Yes, right, and we'll start with new business for that. Perfect, yep.
So do I have a motion to adopt Local Law Six dash twenty-twenty-three?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And then, Jim, seeing our guests in the audience, I talked to trustee Knapp, and we thought we would move the schedule around and have the library and the Green Committee go to the top of the new business list, okay? All right, and Helen, do you want to introduce both of those?
Okay, well, let's start with the Climate Action Plan. So we have a resolution to adopt the Climate Action Plan for municipal operations that Carol Upsher so wonderfully presented last month, with all the work you've done on that with Ellen Edwards and the Green Committee, you know, we so appreciate all the analysis and thought that you put into that report. I know there were several questions that the trustees had at last month's meeting. We kept the meeting open for public comments. I don't know if we, we had, we did receive some
One comment.
One comment. Is there any other discussion of the?
No, I think, I think Carol answered the comments that we had received prior to your report, so that was, that was really helpful.
There was a comment at the end of the meeting, in the public comments, somebody was asking about the costs involved with some of the recommendations, and we just had made the clarification that this is a set of recommendations, and that any, any plan or project that the village adopts will be carefully considered for cost and, you know, undergo a thorough cost-benefit analysis. But we really do appreciate and want to keep in the forefront this idea that, you know, our plan to reduce greenhouse gas and to do our part to, you know, move forward in the climate goals.
And another one, do you also say?
Yes. Yeah. Good point, good point, good point.
Oh, thank you for all you've done, and Ellen Edwards is here, who chairs the committee, and it also reminded me to mention what a huge take-back day you had for the village. Just another, the amount of volunteers you get to come, and I saw those cars lined up at eight o'clock in the morning to shred their documents, which sort of amazes me. My documents just aren't that good. So I should have had that up front in my report, but a huge thank you for putting that together.
And the pumpkin, Jack-o'-lantern drive for the food
That's right.
recycling, that apparently brought up a bunch of pumpkins, right? So
Spilled up the bins.
Yeah.
Spilled up the bins. Increased the weight, so we're going to get the
So thank you for all those initiatives. And Helen, do you want to make the motion on the Climate Action Plan?
Okay, so I make a motion to adopt the Climate Action Plan for municipal operations to help the village make meaningful reductions in our use of fossil fuels and protect our community and the planet from harm associated to climate change. Do I have a motion?
I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We have a Climate Action Plan for the first time ever.
Mayor, just to clarify, the Climate Action Plan is available on the website, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah, and I will just say very briefly, I just thought it was eye-opening. It's just outstanding, and I think anyone who has any interest in this, or how the country or the world is going to actually sort of try to grapple on this, I mean, my takeaway is, you know, it's got to be grappled at largely community by community, which knows its own, you know, needs and requirements and problems, and just, I just thought it was eye-opening, and thank you again.
And we're just glad you moved from Massachusetts to Bronxville, so thank you. That was our good fortune.
Yeah, you aren't allowed to leave.
Yeah. Yes. All right, Helen, and then do you want to move to the library?
Okay, so we have two resolutions regarding the Bronxville Public Library Outdoor Reading Garden, one to accept a SAM grant, submittal and acceptance for the hardscape and landscape improvements. That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand SAM grant that the village is eligible for to offset some of the costs. Do we need to?
Is that from Senator Mayor or Representative Amy Pollan?
That's Amy Pollan.
Amy Pollan. Yeah, so I think we just, this is a nice motion, just to accept the state grant gotten to us by Assemblywoman Pollan, so I will move that second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I would just say that between Representative Amy Pollan and Senator Shelley Mayer, we've been the recipient of many of these SAM grants, and it's quite generous, and we're very lucky to be getting them.
Well said.
Okay, and the other resolution is to award the contract for the design of the outdoor reading garden for the Bronxville Public Library. So I see Christina Kretikos is here, she's been really spearheading with Margaret Major and other trustees and friends of the public library, this entire project. I know when you first submitted the contract for public bid, several bids came back, Casal was the low bidder, you and Jim and the friends, and the library director went back to Casal to reduce the cost, and it seems that this contract that you have in front of you is, you know, been vetted and has been thoroughly analyzed and is acceptable? Jim, any comment?
Yes, yep, and the architect with Peter Giuzzapi's office has recommended that we award it to the low bidder, Casal, and of course, the village has multiple projects that we've done with Casal, so it can certainly speak to his quality of work.
Including Malpe.
Including Malpe.
Malpe, yeah.
Stonework is their specialty, and that's what this is going to involve.
Do you have any comment you want to make on this?
No, no, I can be thoughtful, because they're bidding, you receive four bids from the project.
You should probably talk into the microphone, just so folks on the air can hear.
We received four bids on the project. They range from seven-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand up to one-point-seven million, so there was a spread there. Casal was the lowest bidder, and as Jim had mentioned, they have done previous work in the village, so we felt very confident with them. The one thing was electrical costs were consistently high across all the bids, so we went and reduced the scope, and their revised amount was six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, which we were much more comfortable with, and that's what Jim is going to propose that the board approves tonight.
And do you also want to mention, you sent out a beautiful piece of literature about needing community donation, and what you'd like, what's the goal for funding from us?
So the overall project is seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and we have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar gap that we're trying to fill with the fundraising. We've had several large donations come in already, but we still are going out to the public now, and from now until the end of the year is really the big fundraising push, and we sent an appeal to every resident in town, and we love donations from everyone and anyone. No amount is too small, and we just love the support of the library in the community.
What's your overall goal, goal for fundraising from the Friends?
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
And I think it's important to know that the village board is definitely partners. Did we put in one?
One-fifty, a hundred.
One-fifty, which, just to reaffirm how much we think this project is so, so important to the village.
Absolutely, and Jim and I worked through the numbers, we have projections through the end of the project, commitments from every group, and just fundraising commitments through their friends to cover the remainder. We have the appeal letter and then the party in the spring, so we feel very confident in covering the entire project.
Perfect.
And maybe the only other thing, since Christina's here, that's worth noting is that, and I think this was the first time you saw it, too, was the notification that the SHIBO, the State Agency for Historic Preservation, had reviewed the project to ensure that it was being in conformance, presumably with the library's historical status, and I'm thinking about this, and I was surprised that we saw that letter, that they were reviewing it, and then we saw the approval of it, because the work is, the work is outside, and it's also going to be in keeping with the building, but I'm assuming that it was probably forwarded to them from the dormitory authority, who oversees these applications, you know, and that's what, one of the requirements with SAM grants is it's thoroughly vetted from the dormitory authority and the, and the state legislature, and one of those things they look for, of course, is like your approval, acceptance, et cetera. So my guess is probably as part of that process, the dormitory authority must have looked up and saw that there was a historical status for the library. I don't know if you had anything else?
I don't know any of the details either. Greg is more familiar with it, but it was triggered, and he submitted the paperwork, and everything has been
But the immediate response that it's all in compliance was perfect.
Correct.
And, yeah, so that was all good.
I just have a continued question on the funding. So the overall project in its entirety will be, you said, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Correct.
Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand by the Friends fundraising, a hundred-and-twenty-five from the SAM grant, and then one-fifty from the village, leaves us short two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand.
We're looking at it separately, so I gave these numbers to Jim, I don't have copies I don't have copies for everyone, but we have 150 village contribution. The Friends gave an initial contribution in the beginning of 105,000. So that was to kick off the project. They covered the design costs.
Great.
So we have a SAM grant from the state of 125,000. And then the remainder is split. We secured leadership gifts separately. And that will total 300,000. And then the remainder is 100,000, split between this fall appeal and the spring benefit.
Gotcha.
So in other words, and so as of right now with what the board is approving, and we have broken this up into two phases. So following their review of Casal's lowest bid, the low bidder removing some of those, removing some of those items from his bid, such as benches, some electrical work, they got the price to what you're gonna be approving here, and that's for phase one. And essentially, the library, with the commitments that they've received for the leadership gifts, in addition to the money in hand that the village has already deposited from the Friends of the Bronxville Library, and the village's contribution to SAM, there's, the money is currently available to complete phase one.
Yes, some of the leadership gifts have been collected already, some haven't. So I say the remaining 250 was when we had started the numbers in October. So we just continue to fundraise through the end of the year. We'll get a big push with the appeal letter, and then we're gonna go into the spring benefit in April to cover the phase two costs.
Right, so the village will end up, or the village and/or, in conjunction with the library, will be on the hook if the Friends appeals don't.
Right, well, I think what we can do is, at this point, again, it's depending on, you're gonna be approving the award this evening, but we've discussed having the contractor wait till the, presumably the worst of the winter, winter weather and we'll get started. The phase two, which is again, the landscaping of the benches, I think, at that point in the spring, they'll be able to.
More clarity on that.
Right, on the other funding opportunities. Worst cases, potentially maybe some of the landscaping is pared back until the other donations come in.
Yes, we feel very confident in how we, we split the phases, how the current funding we have in hand. We're starting the work in February more so, so we're gonna award the contract tonight. And then the contractor will start ordering materials. So he'll have everything ready by early winter, and then he'll mobilize his entire team on the project. So we'll have his team on the project as short as possible. So it'll be six, eight weeks, rather than starting now and having to wait with some of the materials. So we've just staged it, so it will be as efficient as possible for the library. And it also allows us to stagger the funding as well.
Well, I echo the mayor's, excuse me, the mayor's comments. The fundraising brochure that was just sent around was, was great and very illustrative of the project.
It went to every household in Bronxville, and we just would love participation from everybody.
Yeah.
And I think also, since, you know, flooding is rightly topic one, this project actually, there's, it helps, it's beneficial to water retention. I mean, that was something that you all looked at, just being mindful of what's going on.
Absolutely, we've got PJ, the, the engineering consultant. We've incorporated a rain garden.
Right.
So drainage is one of our top priorities. We're gonna improve drainage around the perimeter of the building, the window wells, small things, but it's, it's a high priority for us as well.
Perfect, that was really appreciated.
Absolutely.
All right, would you like to move this?
So I move that, that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the village administrator to execute a contract with Tony Casal Incorporated for the amount of 646,000 dollars to complete the phase one work for the Public Library Outdoor Patio Project.
All right, I need a sec.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And thank you for all your hard work.
The support of the library.
Thank you.
All right, and then Mr. Palmer, do you want to, we'll go back to the, the order as written.
Sure, so housekeeping, it's, this month, we need to send, to submit into the county our formal polling site locations, so I've identified those for you here with the caveat that, so again, Village Hall, this is for the village elections to be held on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. Village Hall will be the polling location for District 16 and 17. We have the firehouse down for Districts 18, 19, and 21. And then Christ Church, once again, for District 20 and 22. And as the, was previously conveyed to us, the fire department is gonna be undergoing renovations at a certain point on the, on the firehouse across the street. So in the event that that takes place before the election, then we did secure, thanks to your efforts, utilizing the reformed church across the street once again. So those are the polling locations. In the event that we needed a backup for the firehouse for 18, 19, and 21, then we'll notice that, but the backup would be the reform church.
Perfect, so we just, do I have a motion to accept the polling places?
I'll still move.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, next, housekeeping item is use of our remaining ARPA monies for closing out the project over here at the Midland and Pond Field intersection. You're authorizing the use of 45,833.21 from our ARPA funding for that capital project.
Is this the end of the, is this the end of the ARPA money?
This will be. If there's one other project, it will be funded, and that is the.
That'll be our, right, that'll be coming up at the next board meeting, one of those state of the art enclosed mobile pump that we're gonna, water pump for.
Neighborhood.
Mobility for neighborhood flooding issues. But yes, that'll, that'll close it out. And this money is being applied to some of the extras that we did over here at the intersection, including the addition of a teardrop on the school corner to illuminate the, the crosswalks on that side. So lots of improvements.
Thank you, Lori, our treasurer, for managing the, the ARPA funds and helping us put them where they were needed most, so thank you. All right, so I need a motion to use the ARPA funds for this project.
I'll move it.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Let's get more of it.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll last a long time.
I don't think that, it just kept coming.
Lori, could you make some more money?
Might be the end of our American Rescue money.
Yeah.
I'd just, I'd just like to compliment again everyone who is involved in the procurement and the design of procurement, because I've actually gotten a couple of comments from residents who sort of said, you know, I was kind of worried about how the new lights would look at, you know, the four corners intersection. And they've really been pleasantly surprised that it really looks like they've been there forever. So thanks to, to all those.
Yeah, very in keeping with the village.
Yeah, I think they've turned out even better than we thought as well.
Yeah, I don't know whether you found them at Walmart, Jim, or where you found them.
Certainly not, but I spent a lot of time looking at.
Yes, you did.
Paint colors to get that paint color, just right.
We still have to paint that one pole that I hate.
Yes, yes, there is, yes, there's one more that still needs to be painted. That's.
Okay.
Duly noted, duly noted.
Duly noted. All righty, Mr. Palmer, what's?
Okay, a recommendation for some SCAR proceedings, settlement of some SCAR proceedings from our assessor. There's nine of these, it's for the 2023 year, now for some different addresses.
Total.
Is this about, this looks like a kind of a consistent level of SCAR proceedings?
Yes.
Do you know, we used to have, before revaluation, there was upwards of 300, and now we get approximately 10 or 20. So the difference is unbelievable, actually.
Yep, and there are villages that are still getting those hundreds, and not getting 100%. Yep.
Yeah.
So, all right, and, yes, so obviously, Michael's, or Mark is doing a great job by keeping us current on these, so this will wrap up the 2023 year.
I'll move for adoption.
And I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And, and just for villagers who may be watching, the settlements here amount to a requirement for the village to refund only $5,670 roughly. I mean, it's a, it's a rounding error in the context of the village budget, and I think it really speaks well of our village assessor and processes we have.
Well, I think, and Bill, to your point, when you think about the entire taxable value of property in the village is in excess of $3 billion.
Yep.
And this is 1.5, so you're, you're a basis, you're less than a basis point of, I mean, you're a tenth of a basis point, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, that's the best compare, better comparison, thank you.
All right, do I need, do I, you, you moved that and we voted, correct?
Yeah, we did.
So we're all set on that one?
You did two of them, or you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, so next is, next is the, an AC unit for the police department IT room. We need to, yeah, we need to put some HVAC improvements in there. So we did receive multiple quotes pursuant with our village's purchasing policy. So we're just requesting that the board authorize $3,950 for Neighbor Electric to do the electrical work, and then utilize Innovative Air Solutions for $10,702. And both of these monies will be funded through the use of unassigned fund balance transferred to the capital fund. And again, this is, we've had problems with maintaining an appropriate temperature in the police department server room on the basement level, and we really need to keep that room cold, given the amount of heat that that equipment is generating. There's a lot of equipment in there, so anyway, well worth the money.
All right, I will move that, and do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and then also, in keeping with the police department, we were also requesting to use Neighbor Electric for $5,650 to help out as part of our climate action plan efforts and convert the PD lighting where necessary over to LED. You know, we were, one of the things that we've been trying to work on for the past several years is have another energy consultant come in and evaluate where we do have some of the low hanging fruit. And so we, we put this on pause for quite some time, but we have some areas where the police department needs the LED lighting, and we got some quotes, so we just wanna move forward with it. I think we're still have the energy audit underway, though, and Stevens handling that. But our intention is to also finally paint the PD, which we were really trying to do before COVID. And then with the PD in lockdown mode, we had to postpone all that. So you're authorizing transfer of unassigned fund balance for the LED lighting. And, and if we get that in, we'll paint the building on monies you previously approved. So I'm trying to spiff up the PD a little bit.
But Jim, that just, that just says the second floor. Are there other parts of the PD that, that could go to LED or?
Or does this finish it off?
Do you know if that finishes it off, Steven, for LED lighting over there at the PD? I think so.
But could they do, I mean, is there any reason why we wouldn't just do all that's necessary versus just, you know, this just says second floor, so I was just curious.
Because the payback on something like this is outrageously high.
Yeah, and if the guy's here, and, you know, he's got a contract, it's probably more cost efficient to do as much as possible.
Jim, could you check?
Yeah, I will, I, I think he did a walkthrough, and I think that was, I think that was. Yeah, we'll confirm.
If you could at a future meeting to get an update as to the status of our energy audit, kind of what the status is, timing, et cetera.
We will, yeah, it's, I think they, they did all their walkthrough. They're working on giving us a summary report?
Yeah.
Good, maybe, maybe we could even take that up on the board meets again, yeah, yeah.
And Steven Shallow, thank you for all you're doing with the, the audits and the energy, and appreciated. All right, so do I have a motion to accept this bid from Neighbor Electric? In a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
By the way, speaking of, of energy and climate, did, did we mention publicly the, the $5,000 grant that we got?
Oh, I don't think you did. I think that was after our, our last meeting, correct? For trees, isn't it?
Yes, I think we, I think we brought that, we brought that up at the last meeting, but yes, yep. And I think Stevens already, yeah, and already sent in our Tree, yeah, we did, actually, we did spend it already, but we, we did spend it already, but he also already submitted our Tree City USA application.
I guess we just can't say enough then.
Yes, yeah.
No, it's all, no, it helps.
Thank you for saying it again. All right, Jim, we're near the end.
Yes, to be done, just making note for myself. Okay, next is the, yeah, last, just the bond sale for the, for the police car. So these two items you had previously approved, this is the police car, the Dodge Interceptor, is that what it's, Durango, right, that's the right Durango, yeah. And a, and a coin sorter for the meter collection. So you had previously authorized the issuance of debt service. Now we are starting to, over the course of the next few meetings, you're gonna be considering some bond resolutions as we work toward, what the deputy mayor started asking me about earlier, the next bond issuance that we will, that will be taking on, so in one of the future meetings, you'll be considering the stormwater, the stormwater funding. But for this one, we will do, we will need a road call for our bond council. And again, we break this, it's one resolution, but it breaks out the two projects, which in this case are two equipment purchases and their, and their useful life. And again, that's the police car you previously approved, it's the Dodge Durango, which replaces the, I think it was the Tahoe, that was beyond its last leg. And also our coin sorter, which, I don't know how old the other coin sorter was, but well beyond its useful life is what we got out. It gets, a coin sorter still gets a lot of work.
$11,000 seems like a lot of money for a coin sorter. I have no idea what it does, but it.
This is a heavy.
It must be a big.
This is a heavy duty, yes.
Oh, okay.
We were, believe it or not, to get, that was, that came from well overseas, that, that coin sorter. So in the interim, we had to buy something less than a commercial grade that was getting us through, but not nearly as efficient as it needed to be. So with that said, if there are no questions on the, on the bond, do we have a motion in a second? And then after the roll call?
I, I have one question. It said that for the police car, the period of probable usefulness is three years. And as a matter of practice, do we normally get more than three years' use out of new police cars?
Yes, yes, this is, I think bond council works with a, a schedule, but.
Public, public money as well determines the useful life of assets for these families. And these cars are a period of asset, like, because they're five years. They may have to.
But they go, yes, but they.
We use them longer than that.
They do go longer than that, and mind you, the police vehicles will, will get a lot of wear and tear, but I gotta say, even the, it's not a police car, but even the Explorer that I use is over 10 years old now, and that's still, that's still going. But the police get more wear and tear, but yes, this is just the schedule they go with.
All righty, so do I have a motion? In a second.
Second.
Okay, and then Jim, for bond purposes, we have to do a roll call, correct?
Yes, okay, trustee Knapp?
Aye.
Trustee Barron's?
Aye.
Trustee Fredericks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Marvin?
Aye.
Perfect.
All righty.
Uh, that's.
Do you want for each?
No, no, that's it, yep.
And I think Helen gets to work the coin sorter.
I want to.
You'd also.
I thought the trustees used to get together with those like paper tubes that you get from the bank and fill each roll and.
Our pennies?
Yeah, exactly.
Is it kept in your office? Where is the sorter kept?
The coin sorter is right across the room.
Yeah, it's in a little room.
Right where it belongs.
In three weeks, we processed 52,000.
Wow. From the parking meters? $52,000?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's a lot of coins.
Going all the time.
You know, what's, what's amazing is, is of course, and I should provide you an updated report on that, we, obviously for parking meter revenue alone, the village, for on-street meters, we collect a million, a million dollars. Now, the, the use of Pango has and continues to grow significantly, but coin collection and we do accept Nichols and. but coin collection, and we do accept nickels and dimes, and you'd be amazed, yes, it's still, it's still significant, and it's, there's actually fewer Carter's that are collecting coins, aren't they, Lori?
We have discussed many times whether we should just go with credit cards, because there are a lot of costs that are associated with credit cards, including the, I mean, the wire armored service that we use.
Yeah.
Take it to chase this money, learn from processing, and of course, collection and, all those. Credit cards really offer a level of skewed performance to still.
But it is, but it is, but it is a convenience. But on that note, one thing that you did approve a couple of years ago, and we just haven't, it's got pushed somewhat on the back burner, but we have met with some vendors, is doing a pilot program with the use of meters that would accept credit cards, so we could see what their use is. But again, the Pango, the Pango monies has absolutely continued to grow, but for the, for the shorter-term meters on-street, yes, coins continue to be the preference. But we are going to put a pilot project in place with the use of some of those credit card meters to see what the response is on those. And I, and I think those are even capable of using Apple Pay, so I want to understand how that works. But we're getting there on that, try to get out of the coin business.
Make it like so that coins are less cost benefit. Like you get ten minutes for a quarter instead of fifteen. Every little bit, you know, we need every little bit of revenue.
A service charge for the coins, isn't it?
So that would push people towards credit cards if they wanted to.
Coming into the holiday season.
And while, of course, it's important that you know that we've, we have gone, we have taken all the meters out of all the lots. So residents are either using the kiosks or the Pango there, so it's, but we will test the meters on-street with.
But I also thought of before, we, trustees, anyone else have?
Yes, yep.
I was just going to say, I was in town today, and I saw four or five illegal U-turns on Pondfield, and people, one person actually backed into the spot after doing an illegal U-turn. So just a reminder that illegal U-turns across double yellow are illegal, and please refrain from doing them, especially on Pondfield, where it backs up traffic and it's quite dangerous, and they never quite get in the right spot when they're coming in, they're always on the line. And it's really not fair to do that.
And it sort of segues, though, into shop local for us. It's the shopping season now, and our merchants, this is when they make their money, because, you know, for them especially, July and August are pretty, pretty slow, and they really count on us from now until the end of the year, so. And money, speaking of Lori, how much do we get in sales tax revenue?
Sales tax revenue is about four hundred and forty-two thousand. So far this year, I don't know if it's going to stay on target or not. I just said that was for the last.
Last year, we took over the one point, one point six five million, and, yep, yep.
So, you know, just telling the residents, think about that. That's one point six five million that comes in to the Village and lowers your taxes. And, you know, if you bought everything on Amazon, taxes that go up, that's about a twelve percent tax increase on our side.
Ten percent of our budget.
Yeah, ten percent of our budget is.
Actually, it's, you know, it's quite amazing if you, and if you read the county executive's budget, of course, they increased their sales tax revenue. And it, but yes, sales tax seems to be staying strong. It was, it's, over the last three years, it's really seen a steady increase. And we did, as Lori said, we just received that first payment, and that was, I'd love to see us keep that momentum up, but, but we'll see. But on that note, Mayor, it's probably worth noting for the residents that with Small Business Saturday, once again, in our newsletter, we noted that John Gordon of Amor Realty is going to be buying out all those meters on the, on the east side, on Pondfield Park and Craft. And we'll also offer the free parking in our lots from noon on on that Saturday, so.
And people wonder, just to tell our audience, why we have it noon on and not all day, and it's because when we used to do all day, we found out people parked and went into the city. So they were not helping the merchants. So sometimes people were like, oh, my gosh, village government, you're just cheap. And the answer is no, it keeps people from going in. People were parking and going to lunch and a show in Manhattan, so it was defeating the shop local purpose. So that's why the noon, and it works, it really does work, so.
And Mayor, just on this subject, I use it as an example, because it's the only example that immediately springs to mind, but I think of our, you know, wonderful bookstore here in the Village. You know, in my experience, if you want to order a book, you go down there, you order a book, and you can pick it up usually in just, you know, a couple of days. You know, you save the environmental cost of delivery and Amazon, one less Amazon truck in the neighborhood. I'm sure there are other businesses in the Village which are, which are similar. So, you know, people should also, you know, think that, you know, our merchants can often order things, and it can actually be more convenient for everyone, and it also helps the Village.
Yeah, yeah, and you'd be surprised how much our DPW, when you talk about the ripple effect, they talk about how many extra boxes from Amazon and Zappos in particular, and it affects everything, environment, workload, et cetera. So shop local. Any, we have our stalwart audience, the Hayden Fitzgerald families, who come and send us good karma, so thank you for being here.
Any comments from them?
Yes. Yes, no, all right, okay, it's okay.
Short of words, Jim, short of words.
Yeah, and Jim, thank you again for serving on the planning board. So appreciative, it really is, because that's been a busy board, you know, it has. All right, I need a motion to close our November thirteenth meeting.
So moved?
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, and our December date, James, is?
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
And then, and the board discussed, we have a tentative work session scheduled for the December tenth.
Perfect. So we'll see everybody either tenth and or eleventh.